Good evening. I will call this meeting the November 6th meeting of the Paducah Planning Commission and URCDA to order. Would ask that you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we call the roll, I will make one adjustment to the published agenda. The item, the first item of business that will come up is a URCDA petition. We will not be hearing that tonight because we will not have a quorum for that meeting. So that item is deleted from the agenda. With that, I would ask Mr. Summers to go ahead and call the roll. We are waiting for one more person to get here. Do you wish to go ahead and begin?
We can, and I can note it in the minutes when he gets here.
On his arrival? Alright, so please call the roll.
Commissioner Ben Barry, Commissioner Griffin, Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Morrison, Commissioner Carmen, Commissioner Rhodes.
Here.
Chairman Wade.
Here. Alright, we have no continuing petitions. We have two new petitions. And, oh, I'm sorry, I missed out on the minutes. I'm jumping all around. But we can't vote on the minutes yet, so Josh Goddard's here. Do you want to go ahead and do a staff report on the new petitions or just wait?
I certainly can, Mr. Chairman. If you would like, I can start with the signs.
You go right ahead.
Okay, that's what we'll do. I believe Commissioner Griffin is going to be here pretty soon by the looks of it, but I will get started. So this is a proposed text amendment to Section 12676 of the Sign Code and the Paducah zoning ordinance. The highlights is to permit projecting signs in the B2 downtown business zone, clarify enforcement of the sign code, revise definitions, revise the zoning code to conform to the case of City of Austin, Texas versus Reagan National Advertising of Austin LLC, LLC, and performance standards for murals. On April 21st, 2022, the US Supreme Court found in City of Austin, Texas versus Reagan National Advertising of Austin that there is a distinction that you can read a sign to determine if it's on premise or off premise. The standard prior to this was Reed versus Gilbert, which was the last Supreme Court case, which basically said that you cannot read a sign. You have to determine its performance standards based on time, place, manner, height, width, those physical characteristics. However, in the new case brought between, like I said, the City of Austin and Reagan National Advertising, the City of Austin wasn't sure how to enforce their sign code. So their officers were indeed reading the sign, and it eventually made its way to the US Supreme Court. So the court found that basically you can read a sign without disturbing Reed versus Gilbert. Justice Sotomayor noted that jurisdictions have regulated onsite versus offsite signage across the United States for quite a while, and that Gilbert versus Reed was indeed left intact. And Justice Sotomayor also argued that sign code provisions that are content-based can be done simply because it requires somebody to read the sign at issue. And at this time, the B2 downtown business zone does not allow projecting signs. Since this zoning surrounds the B2T zone, which does allow projecting signs and has some of the same massing and characteristics and scale as the B2T zone, staff is recommending projecting signs in the B2 downtown business zone in the same size of six square feet. And prior, we had a policy for murals, but nothing codified in our ordinances. So staff would like to introduce murals into the zoning code as a way to make it easier for somebody that wants to paint a mural to understand what they're going to be required to do. So to get into that, the very first major change is to allow any city official to read a sign to determine whether it is on premise or off premise as defined under advertising sign, which is allowed pursuant to City of Austin, Texas versus Reagan National Advertising of Austin.
Hey Josh.
Yes, sir.
Can I interrupt you for a minute? So Reagan Advertising, they wanted Austin to loosen up their sign regulations, I'm going to presume, being a for-profit business? I guess I'm saying, what drove all this?
There was a billboard company that wanted to turn static billboards into electronic billboards in Austin. And because of Reed versus Gilbert, they had to leave those characteristics the same where they couldn't do a conversion. So the billboard company Reagan sued the City of Austin, is how this all came about.
So City of Austin is not, they were not beating this drum to update their sign ordinance?
No, it come from the advertiser, from the sign company.
So, okay.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Rhodes?
Well, it sort of confirmed, I mean, okay. So do we have some sign companies drooling about having great big signs in downtown Paducah? I mean, is that...
Oh, that answer is no, because we are simply trying to come into conformance with the US Supreme Court at this time to make sure that our zoning code is in line and all that.
The regulation has to comply with what the Supreme Court says you can do with sign ordinance. It has to remain, the law on its face has to be content neutral. So this is clarifying that the regulations are content neutral. Because that case was decided and the Supreme Court said city officials can read the text of the sign for the sole purpose of making sure that obscene, whether it's off-premise or on-premise, it's clarifying that that doesn't mean the regulation is not content neutral. It's just to keep it in compliance and make sure that it's clear that this is still a content neutral regulation.
You can see, I guess, being a former businessperson, how I'm a little nervous when a business wants to...
You shouldn't be nervous. It's just, it's just the Supreme Court subjects certain ordinances to strict scrutiny if they regulate the content of the sign based on its content, because then that would be a content-specific regulation in violation of the First Amendment. But this clarification is just saying that a city official can look at a sign just for the sole purpose of determining whether that's an on-premise sign or off-premise sign means that you won't be subjected to further scrutiny of that regulation because of the looking at the content of it.
Please continue.
Thank you. The next major change is to temporary signs, and currently we have temporary signage in place not to exceed 67 consecutive days, at which time it must be removed or replaced with a different sign. Staff is proposing verbiage to say the same sign may not be replaced within 30 days, and a different sign may replace the sign in question. No more than two special event signs, and sandwich board signs must be placed on the sidewalk in front of the business associated with said sign. And as far as the enforcement of this part of the zoning ordinance, the Fire Prevention Division, they are the enforcement branch of the zoning code, and it wasn't specifically spelled out in the zoning ordinance at this time. And we're basically putting this verbiage back into the zoning code that enforcement of this section shall be carried out pursuant to Chapter 42 of the Paducah Code of Ordinances, and any appeal stemming from signage enforcement shall be to the Board of Adjustment, and that's according to KRS 100.261. Let's see, under General Regulations, advertising signs shall follow the performance standards for the underlying zone, and directional signs indicating an entrance, exit, or location of parking shall be permitted, provided such signs do not exceed four square feet in area for each sign, and the height shall not exceed 30 inches above grade, and there shall be no more than four. In the residential and mixed-use zone, this is specifically for religious and cemetery uses, that they can have an electronic message sign subject to the following: At least 150 feet away from any residential dwelling or mixed-use dwelling with a residential component, such sign must decrease in brightness or intensity by at least 30% during the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM, and a message board may be located on a freestanding sign. However, the total height of the message board and freestanding sign may not exceed eight feet in height. And for electronic message signs in the MU zone, mixed-use zone, shall not exceed 32 square feet. And the last major change is for murals.
Are we going to get a chance to ask some questions about some of these points?
Oh, sure. Go ahead. Do you have a question about anything I've covered so far?
For example, the one about the signs where it has to dim between 9:00 and 6:00 AM. Well, I was thinking, wouldn't daylight savings time, I mean, right now, I mean, it gets pretty dark at 5:00 in the afternoon, and gets light, I mean, I'm just saying that it's pretty arbitrary to say 9:00 to 6:00. I mean, in the summer, that's probably pretty good, but it means you're trying to not blind motorists by these bright lights. I was just thinking about that.
Okay.
I think it was correlation between that and the noise ordinance.
Yeah.
When the noise reduction takes place in the residential.
Okay, well, but if you're trying to, okay, that makes some, this makes some sense to me, but what about, so we do allow, back on page three, item number 13, I didn't realize that we had electronic message signs downtown that were allowed, LED signs. I'm not really very comfortable with that, item 13. Not to date, I don't care how, I just want them downtown. Page three, item 13. It talks about electric message signs, obviously you can have, it says computer-generated, generated, uses electronic means of changing copy, LEDs, LCDs.
That's general sign regulations, that's not...
Do we have to have it that way? I mean, I just think to have that on Broadway would look pretty ugly. I mean, unless you're going for the Times Square, like, I don't think that's going to happen. Sony and everybody else moving to downtown Paducah.
Put that down on Broadway, though, doesn't it? Is that following?
Correct.
Does it?
This is the general sign regulations. Broadway has its own zoning district.
Okay, so this is not, so this is not appropriate for Broadway?
If it were allowed, then those things would apply. But there's exclusions for...
Okay, I'm just, like I said, I'm doing this board, so I'm not, I'm not used to this. So, okay, as long as we're not going to have gigantic LED signs on Broadway.
There's restrictions on...
Okay, well, I didn't know, alright. Okay. Well, what is the intent, I think, up to page, back on my question about lighted signs. So on page 10, item 6C, I guess would be about the time, the intensity of these things. What's, what's the purpose of that red highlighted area? We're trying, what are we trying to accomplish? Just to make those signs not as offensive or not as glaring?
Yes, that is correct. To allow places of worship to have an electronic message sign that would be compatible with the neighborhood they're in or that surrounds them.
And the light still wouldn't be allowed to extend beyond the property line.
Light can't extend. Okay. And how does, how does, how does the light of some kind of a lighted sign, okay. Okay, anyway.
So there's a lot of historic churches in residential areas that are wanting to convert to digital signage, and so we are trying to create regulation for that integration into this residential context.
Is this, is this pretty, again, I'm sorry for my lack of, I mean, is this what other cities do about visual signs in neighborhoods that have churches?
I have seen other cities, for example, Metropolis, I think may have a few, I have no idea what their zoning regs are. But in this case, we do think that humanities-based uses, in this case cemeteries and places of worship, are a little bit different than a residence, that they're historically within those neighborhoods, but function differently in the respect that that's their platform, that's their main platform for getting out their message, their times, their dates, things like that. And churches have been in historic neighborhoods, or in any neighborhood, forever. And this is simply providing a way to allow them the technology to basically keep with the times, to allow the nearby residents to know what their...
And this is a pretty standard approach to regulating electronic message signs in a residential area.
Fair enough. So we're not, we're not reinventing the wheel?
No.
Anything else right there?
Mr. Summers, would you continue?
So for murals, we are introducing this as a policy. Some of it will be citywide, some of it is going to be specific to the historic zones. We've defined mural as any inscription, artwork, marking, design, or lawful graffiti under this section that is marked, etched, scratched, drawn, or painted on structures or on thoroughfares in the City of Paducah. Murals proposed on thoroughfares are only permitted in H2 historic neighborhood zone. And to boil this down a little bit, if there is a portion of a mural that contains a reference, drawing, wording, or otherwise points to a place, object, thing, that's considered a sign, and it has to conform to the underlying zone which it's contained in, the artistic portion of a mural can take up the entire facade, but the signage portion does have to stay within, if it's a commercial zone, 20% of the facade, or if it's in a residential zone, in most cases, it would also be 20% as well if it's the R4 zone. Murals in the historic zones do have to receive approval from the Hark Historic Architecture Review Commission in the H1 historic commercial zone, the historic neighborhood zone, H2, or the NSZ zone, which is commonly known as Fountain Avenue. And as mentioned earlier, thoroughfares must receive approval from the Creative and Cultural Council in the H2 zone, if they're on the public right-of-way. And any person, group, or corporation or business that wishes to create a mural must obtain permission from the property owners in writing, and it shall also describe the maintenance of the mural upon creation, and shall be made available to the city upon request. And any mural that falls into disrepair shall be subject to any and all remedies available to the City of Paducah. And that is the major changes to the sign ordinance. And if there's any further questions, I would be glad to answer those, if y'all would have any.
I guess I've got some, but I'd like some others to talk first. Well, let's move on to the opening of the motion, which I believe Mr. Rhodes should have.
Right here. I move this commission adopt a resolution recommending to the board commissioners that the case TXT 2023-001 pertain to the text amendments of 126-76 sign regulations of the Paducah zoning ordinance be adopted.
There's a second?
Second.
There is a second. Move to the second. Let me go ahead at this point and open a public hearing on this, and we'll take any comments from anyone in the audience. Hearing now, I won't give any instructions on how to do that. Rather, I will now close the public hearing and ask for any comments from the Planning Commission before we move on.
I read this, but, and I didn't see it, what about the signage, realtor signage? I know that that kind of can get to be a sore spot with that, and it's, with the city, it's not clear to where you can put them, or they say you're supposed to not put them in the right-of-way, and they'll pull them, but then you drive right down the road, and they're in the right-of-way. So is there a type of sign that can be put in the right-of-way as opposed to another sign that can be put in the right-of-way?
There are not supposed to be any signs in the right-of-way at all.
That's what I thought it was, but, yeah, that's exactly what I thought.
What about garage sale on utility poles?
That's not supposed to happen either.
So perhaps we need to focus also on education and enforcement. Yes, sir.
We are out enforcing that as we determine, as a matter of fact, in one of our inspection department, April 15, a individual has been requested to not do it, April 15 today, and we are starting the proceeding to get that in.
And I get that, and they do, and they do pull them, and I just, I kind of know this on the firsthand type deal, but they'll be right across the road, and they don't pull them over there, you know, and I don't know if it's a different name that's on the realtor sign, you know, that, you know, that's a whole, that's a whole administrative type deal, I guess, right there, you know, if you're going, I'm good with playing ball fair, but everybody needs to play fair.
Our staff has been instructed if they say when they're out and they're not in compliance, they're going to be pulled. In the, uh, the individual that is pulling them, they're going to come up to the city hall.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have several. So, I guess, all right, first of all, I mean, the ordinance is to promote, I mean, do we want more downtown murals? Is that kind of what we're thinking about? Is that kind of the intent to set the parameters?
The intent is to set the parameters. We've been approached over the years several times for murals, and there wasn't a clear way to say, this is your performance standards to do that within. And what this text amendment does is create that parameter on who they need to go to, who they need to get permissions from, if there's going to be an actual sign component versus all artistic. It says that parameter so that somebody on MUNICO can go to that and see exactly what they're allowed to do.
You know, sometimes this city, and I was part of, I guess I still am, sometimes we, let me tell you just a real quick little story. If anybody's driven to Lower Town recently, you've seen we've added, refreshed and added to fireplug art. And maybe somebody said to themselves, why does every one of the fireplugs have an orange cap? Have you ever thought that? Well, the orange caps are the, are the symbol to the fireman that, oh, this fireplug will pump 400 gallons of water a minute. But all fireplugs in the City of Paducah flow at 400 gallons a minute. That's why they're all silver. Except when Lower Town artists and neighbors said, could we do fireplugs? The city said, yes, but we want the fireplug caps to be orange. And I kind of rolled my eyes and bit my tongue and said, no, okay, even though it doesn't mean anything different than any of the silver fireplugs, we'll paint them all orange. But it did, it was like, oh, so the fireplugs all have to be this creative fireplug, but they all have an orange cap. And I don't think the city meant to buy it. I'm sure you did, and you weren't trying to stifle artistic talent or these fireplugs, but it did, a little bit. Because like I said, all fireplugs in the City of Paducah all run 400 gallons a minute. None of them have orange caps except the ones we painted in Lower Town. So having said that, I guess I've got some questions about the ordinance, because I spent last Friday afternoon in Marion, Illinois, and they've got about, I don't know, 12 or 15 huge murals. And I talked to the guy who, I talked first of their city plan, and I said, so where's the ordinance? We don't have one. I said, okay. I said, well, nice job. You did a great job with the murals. And I sent pictures to you all, Josh and Nick. And so I then talked to the man who sort of organized it, and he said, well... and he said, well, he said, frankly, what we did is we just made sure that we had no, no politics, no vulgarity, no hate.
How did they do that?
And no profanity. He said, well, we, we put out the call for artists, we paid for all the materials, and we approved their, their murals, and they are lovely, and they have.
How did they say we're not going to have this?
They just said, this is the rules.
Well, because they were investing in the mural itself.
They paid for the paint, the city paid for the paint and the brushes and the rollers.
But in this, what's before the commission tonight is a general regulation. If a private individual would like to do a mural.
Supply their own supplies.
Correct.
So, so I guess I'm seeing, I, I just get, I'm sorry to drag you off this, but I just have several questions. The first of which is we talk about thoroughfare under Q murals. We twice word, use the word murals on thoroughfares, and I guess, I'm not sure what, when we're putting a mural on a thoroughfare, does that mean all the, like the street art that we do in Lower Town?
Yes, that, that is correct.
So if it's on a thoroughfare, I was just confused, why don't we have Hark doing streets, I mean, doing buildings in Fountain Avenue HB one and two, and we have the Creative Cultural Kind doing intersection art? And I was wondering if there was any thought that we should have, like, one or both do it to where, I mean, we're trying to promote the cultural council, and I don't know if they would be, if that'd be something to include them in there?
The distinction was made that the Hark regulates private property with applications, and the Creative and Cultural Council would regulate what is on public property in the sense of thoroughfares.
Okay. Okay, I realize that the Creative Cultural Counter even approved the intersection art on Madison, okay, that's fine. I was kind of curious about that. Should we, do we say in the, I mean, in the regulations here, do we mention about Confederate flags, or profanity, or politics, or hate, or vulgarity? I don't, I didn't exactly, I mean, I sort of see some of those, should we be a little more bold about that? Like, no hate speech? This isn't a time to, or, and, and for sure, I don't want, I mean, I think we had to go ahead and say, look, no Confederate flags. That's hateful. I mean, we got one out there in the county. I mean, should we have some of these things put in here?
Mr. Bradford, I will defer to you.
We, we can't put that into a regulation, that you can't have certain Confederate speech. That is a violation of First Amendment.
You're saying you can or cannot?
You cannot say in a city ordinance that you cannot put up a Confederate flag. That is, that is a textbook violation of First Amendment.
Okay, what about vulgar, what about hate speech, politics, profanity?
Well, there's certain definitions of hate speech, and I, I can't, I don't have any reference for that. I'm ahead of, of what section of the ordinance regulates that, but, but somebody can't just go up and write hate speech on a mural, and it'd be illegal.
So should we put that in the ordinance?
No. It's regulated otherwise.
Okay, that's fine, that's why I'm asking the question. You all are outside smarter than I am. Okay, all right, Paul says it's okay. All right. All right. And I'm, I'm just trying to think of things ahead of time, all right? So let's say that, let's pick on somebody. So if you've got an existing mural, if it maxes brick oven, if I'm out there in the, in their patio, and I look up, and it's their Edward Hopper, and I can, it's, it's the two ladies sitting in a Chinese restaurant on their mural, so that can stay, right? Because it's existing mural, and, sorry, it's an existing mural, and it doesn't, but it, but it's a restaurant scene, and it's advertising their restaurant. I mean, is that, are we going to run into that buzzsaw that, that somebody can say, well, Max, you got to take your, your, your sign down, because it does represent a restaurant? I'm just asking the question, I'm not trying to be ugly, I'm just. But there is kind of their sort of take on an Edward Hopper, it's not, it's not. Anyway, just something to think about.
I mean, it would be grandfathered in, they wouldn't be required to remove it.
Okay.
And that would also be in the H one, so that would be under the purview of Hark.
And if Hark approved it, then we're good to go.
Correct.
Perfect, okay.
Because Hark's biggest thing is painting unpainted brick.
Like black.
Just any application of paint to masonry.
So, all right, so let me ask, and I'm just, here again, I'm just, so it says that a, that a building cannot have a similar graphic related to its activity. So let's say that the Golden Carrot hired Trey to paint a mural on the Golden Carrot downtown. And Trey says, look, I can't put Golden Carrot in the mural, because then it becomes a sign, correct?
Now, you can put Golden Carrot in the mural, just that portion cannot exceed twenty percent of the facade.
Right, and, but then that twenty percent becomes a sign.
Yeah, correct.
What if, what if Trey, being the clever person here, says, I'm not going to put Golden Carrot, but I'm going to put this great big carrot in their mural? I'm just, you know, is that, is that, of course, that would be on Hark, right, to kind of hash that out? All I'm saying is, is it, when you say something in broad, broad, but you get down to spill specific items, do you, it's kind of like the orange caps on the fireplugs, does it make where the artist or the business owner says, oh, heck, I really can't do what I want to do? I mean, all I'm saying is, are we, are we stifling that creativity? I don't know, I'm just asking the question, because I'm not an artist.
Well, I think the public health, safety, and welfare takes priority over artist creativity. And so that's why these policies and recommendations are put into place to address that as a top priority. And obviously, we want to be conducive to application of art in multiple forms. But at the end of the day, the decisions of this body is to, you know, make the highest and best decision for the public's health, safety, and well-being.
We're sort of setting the guardrails, defenses.
Okay. Trusting Hark in those situations to make determinations.
All right, well, I just.
Which they already do in other components of those areas. It adds to it.
Okay.
Thank you, you got anything else?
No, that's it, I'm, I'm sorry to, I'm just.
Concerned. Does anyone else have any comments? All right, if not, would you please call a roll, Mr. Summers?
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Griffin.
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler.
Aye.
Chairman Wade.
Aye.
All right, now, next item of business, we're going to jump back up to the minutes portion from the September seventh meeting. We did not have a business to cover for the October session, so therefore there are no minutes for that meeting, and the Septembers were carried over into that portion to today. So hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review the minutes. And I believe, Commissioner Kayler, you have a motion for this?
I move that the reading of the minutes for September seventh, twenty twenty-three be waived, and that the minutes of said meeting, as prepared by staff, be approved as written.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any additions, correction, or deletions to those said minutes? Hearing now, Mr. Summers, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Griffin.
Aye.
Chairman Wade.
Aye.
And then I think our last item of business is a text amendment, and we'll open up for the staff report first. And then I will say, we will read the motion, and I think we're going to have a motion to table after that.
Yes.
Well, actually, we'll have a public hearing opened up, and then hearing comments, then we'll entertain a motion to table.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The landscape rigs for the city of Paducah are proposed to be amended as well, and the high level view is to add additional protections to woodlands regarding clear cutting of trees, place specific performance standards on screening instead of being arbitrary, and introduce requirements for trees for single-family and two-family structures. For landscape reviews, single-family and two-family will now be addressed under landscaping ordinance, and the only type of development that will not be required for any type of landscaping is parking lots under four spaces, and those can remain as gravel. New single-family and two-family construction sites shall contain at least one shade or canopy tree per unit, and it shall be in the front yard. And so what that means, if you have a two-family structure, one tree has to be on either side of the two-family structure or in the front yard of the single-family home. Under screening requirements, we had a laundry list of what they could be, but it wasn't specifically spelled out what it necessarily should be. And in most cases, it's an eight-foot tall privacy fence with at least one row of evergreen, evergreen trees in front of it spaced twenty feet apart for different types of applications, instead of having a less defined way of applying the screening. And for clear cutting, there has been some angst in the city of Paducah over the last couple of years regarding clear cutting, and staff felt it best to address this, and we pulled resources from other cities to develop this proposed text amendment. And what we're defining as clear cutting is the removal of trees from a forested area to the extent that there is a clear danger of soil erosion and depositing of eroded soil upon adjacent land, public streets, private streets, or into adjacent waterways. The removal of fifty percent or more of all trees on a lot, which are two and a half inches in diameter or greater at a point twelve inches above the ground, shall be considered a clear danger of soil erosion unless the planning department determines the risk of soil erosion is minimal based on the circumstances. And it also includes the removal of all trees from a forested area at one time without regard to species, quality, age, or spacing. And it's important to note the purpose behind this that we've gathered, and it's to prevent harmful impacts or indiscriminate clearing of trees, to minimize the unnecessary destruction of trees and to maintain their existence, to preserve the benefits of dust control, shade, air and water quality, natural habitat, and view sheds, to mitigate the impacts caused by the removal of trees similar to the impacts of other elements of construction or land use activity, to encourage the incorporation of existing trees supplemented by planned new trees into subdivisions and site plans, and to permit the appropriate removal and number of trees necessary for land development. We have established some guidelines for the clear cutting of trees, either on a single lot or contiguous lots. That a site plan has to be approved by all applicable city departments, which typically, that's planning, engineering, and fire prevention. A preliminary subdivision plat has been approved by the Paducah Planning Commission. An amendment to a development plan or other similar documentation has been approved by the Hark, the Board of Adjustment, or the Planning Commission. The approval of an erosion prevention and sediment control, otherwise known as an EPSC plan in applicable circumstances. And we do have an approved tree list that has always been handed out with developers here lately as far as the species of trees that they can plant. And the exceptions that we would allow is the removal of trees by a governmental agency, the removal of trees within existing or planned right of way, the removal of trees within existing or planned utility or ingress egress easements, the removal of trees to control an invasive species, and the removal of trees on a residential lot under two acres. We're also prohibiting clear cutting on lots on a floodway or in a hundred-year flood plain, and that, of course, is to maintain water control and erosion on those specific lots. Staff is recommending that this particular text amendment be tabled tonight because we are expecting two small changes to be coming forth. Mr. Jonathan Perkins, the chairman of the Tree Board, has made a couple of comments that we would like to reflect in this, specifically to the heights of evergreen trees to be planted as opposed to the diameter of the trees. And he also would like to expand the tree protection zone in construction sites. Right now, it's at a standard ten foot, but that should vary based on the size of the trees. I've asked Mr. Perkins to get me those comments, and I would be glad to incorporate them into the next staff report at the next meeting. So in order to have time for staff to discuss, Mr. Bradford to review, and for the public to comment, we would like to table this till the December meeting.
Move anything else? We will go ahead and open a public hearing for this, since that's in due course, and would entertain any comments from the public. Hearing now, I'll close this public hearing and entertain a motion to table until the input from the Tree Board and other changes can be made to this ordinance, or to this.
Text amendment.
Text amendment, thank you.
It doesn't say anything about table. Hold the tab on this, but anyway, I'll read it. I move that this commission adopt the resolution recommending the board of commissioners, commissioners, that case TXT two oh two three dash two oh, I mean, dash zero 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 two pertaining to the text amendment of one twenty-six dash eighty-three landscape regulations of the Paducah zoning ordinance be adopted.
Will it say be tabled?
It doesn't say tabled.
No, you know, we didn't read the ordinance to begin with, did we? Or the, the text amendment to be motioned in seconded, did we? Did we, Mr. Summers?
We did not.
I apologize. So we have a motion to open the text amendment, is there a second to that motion?
I give you a second.
Moved in seconded. Now, to keep in proper order, I will announce a public hearing and entertain any comments regarding these proposals. Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing, now we will entertain a motion to table this until the December fourth meeting.
Can I second that?
Somebody's got to make the motion first.
Do you want me to read the same thing?
No, no, he's entertaining a motion to table, so if any of the planning commissioners should feel so inclined, you can make a motion to table the previous motion, and that will, if it's passed, put it on the table and not vote on it tonight.
We have not called the roll on this motion because we're seeking to put it onto the table.
I make a motion that we table the last motion.
I'll second.
Until December the fourth meeting?
Until December fourth meeting.
I'll second.
Probably moved in seconded. Please call the roll, this has to do with tabling this until December.
Commissioner Griffin.
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Chairman Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Summers, through all this, have I missed anything?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think we are good to go.
Mr. Hutchinson, out of all this, have I missed anything? All right, with nothing else, I will call for the adjournment of this meeting. Our next meeting is December the fourth. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.